You can hear, right?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Okay. So please set your motivation to the Bodhisattva motivation, which is to attain enlightenment for the sake of all sentient beings. Is that good? Yeah, okay. So the topic that we are going to cover today is known as the the four seals, the four seals of Buddhism or four seals of the Buddha Dharma. And also, are we doing the four immeasurables today?
I'm to do it.
Okay, alright, okay. So, so the request made was four seals and the four immeasurables, so eight of them. I don't know, I mean, we can, we can just touch on all of them a little bit, yeah. So, so first of all, greetings to everyone. Good evening, good morning, wherever you live, yeah, everyone who's here as well as watching online. So, most of us, most of us being born in typically predominantly Buddhist countries, in a Buddhist upbringing, we consider ourselves to be Buddhist, myself included. But to become a real Buddhist, to be included, to be called a Buddhist or to be included as a Buddhist, whether you are a real Buddhist or not, actually, you have to ask yourself, do you know about the four seals of the Buddha Dharma? If you are, if you know the four seals of Dharma and if you, let's say, accept the four seals of Buddha Dharma, then you are a Buddhist. And if you don't follow or accept, acknowledge the four seals of the Buddha, then you are not a Buddhist. But in general, generally speaking, there can be two ways of looking at whether you are a Buddhist or not. So one way of looking at whether you are a Buddhist or not, we call that Buddhist as a conduct. And whether we have the same, whether we hold the Buddhist view or the Buddhist conduct. So you are a Buddhist by conduct. If you follow the triple gem, the Buddha, the Dharma and the Sangha, if you follow the Buddha, Dharma, Sangha, then you are a Buddhist through conduct, through your behavior. If you
There are two ways of calling, being a Buddhist or not, is through the conduct and view.
Okay, so but you can, you can be considered a Buddhist either through conduct or through your view attitude. So as a mentally, as a, as a conduct, you need to have, if you take refuge into the triple gem, the Buddha, Dharma and the Sangha, then you can be considered a Buddhist. But if you, even if you accept the triple gem as your refuge, the Buddha, Dharma and Sangha as your refuge, but if you don't hold the, if you don't hold the four seals as your view, then you are not a Buddhist through what we usually call through your view. Or strictly speaking, you are not a Buddhist if you don't hold this particular view, that the view of the four seals. If you don't have the attitude of the four seals, then you are not a Buddhist. So I think it's, usually we talk about being a Buddhist when we, we talk about taking that refuge into the triple gem as being a Buddhist or not. And to, to a certain degree, it's very important. And for, for a lot of people who does not have the time to study Buddha Dharma thoroughly, you know, the only way to become a Buddhist is to become a Buddhist through conduct or by following the triple gem. So for that reason, we do not want to exclude people who wish to follow the Dharma, want to study the Dharma, but does not, has not, have not yet reached the level of accepting the four seals as their viewpoint. So therefore, you know, you can become a Buddhist through taking refuge as well. So even though it's, it's such a considerable thing to take refuge into the Buddha, Dharma and the Sangha by itself, that is such a considerable feat, you know. A lot of people do not have that opportunity. So those people who have the opportunity to take the Buddha, Dharma, Sangha in as their, take refuge in the Buddha, Dharma, Sangha, to take refuge in the triple gem are so fortunate, so lucky. But then that's, that's about it. So even though it's very meritorious to take refuge in the Buddha, Dharma and the Sangha, and of course, it will be very helpful for you in this life as in the next lives to come as well. But that's about it, the benefits kind of end there. If you, if you want to just get along in your life and that's about, that's, that's your goal, and maybe following the triple gem by itself is sufficient enough. But if you want something more than that, if you want to, let's say, get out of samsara, if you want to get out of this cyclic existence, this vicious cycle of life and death and life and death and life and death and life and death going on and over and over again, then we have to do some more practice, we have to upgrade our level of practice. Or in other words, we have to upgrade our way of thinking. And for that reason, we have to adopt the four seals as our practice or our way of thinking. To, to tell you more clearly, to put it more simply, Buddha himself said, Buddha said, that I can show you the path to Nirvana or out of some, the way out of samsara, the path that leads out of samsara, I can show you that. But the actual walk or the actual, the actual walk you have to take by yourself. I cannot give my attainments or my knowledge to you or take away your suffering. So you know, that begs the question of why do we pray to Buddha? Why do we pray to the Dharma, Sangha or, you know, so how does, you know, the prayer help? And all this kind of question arises. So, so what Buddha, by praying to the Buddha, Dharma and Sangha, your, we accumulate a lot of good merit, merit. And so for that reason, our negativities are purified through our good actions. And so therefore, we accumulate good, we accumulate positive karma, positive merit, as well as we purify our negativities. And because of that, most of the time when we accumulate merit, we are able to delay the outcome of our negative karma. But as long as we do not uproot or cleanse all the negative karma that we have accumulated in, in our past lives, which are, you know, beginningless, timeless, as long as all the karmic imprints are there, these will keep on generating more and more negative karmic forces or karmic effects, and we will keep suffering on and over and over again. And so therefore, one example would be a teacher or a coach, let's say, can teach you how to run, how to work out, how to do your exercise, how to do your workout. But he or she cannot work out for you, right? So the teacher cannot work out for you and you lose your weight or you gain your muscle or this kind of thing. That's not possible. So can always show you the way. So similarly, by taking refuge in the Buddha and the Dharma and the Sangha, you are seeking refuge or you are asking for guidance from the Buddha, Dharma and Buddha. And the Buddha gives the guidance and by following the guidance on your own, by adopting, let's say, the, for, for, the, let's, adopting the four seals, then you will be able to liberate yourself, you will be able to work your way out of samsara. So to tell you briefly, the four seals of the Dharma, so one of the reason, okay, let's say, the reason it's called a seal, so just like a seal is a, is a sign for marking something. So when you have those seals, then you are, let's say, marked as a Buddhist. If you don't have that seal, then you are not a real Buddhist. But if you have that seal, if you have those four seals, then usually it doesn't happen like that, but if you, even if you don't take refuge in the Buddha, Dharma, Sangha, you can still be considered a Buddhist. But if you don't have those four seals, then you are half Buddhist, not fully Buddhist, you know. So the four seals are, the, the four seals are known as, the first of the four seals is that all compounded phenomena are impermanent. Then the second one is that all contaminated things or phenomena are suffering and that all phenomena are empty of having an inherent existence and then they have no self, no self. And then that Nirvana or liberation, Nirvana is the ultimate peace. That is known as the four, four seals. So the first of the, the four seals is the all compounded phenomena are impermanent. All things that has been compounded, all things that has been put together, all things that has been gathered from different sources and different factors that are all impermanent. So that for, for example, our lives, our lives were put together or compounded through the, through the meeting of our parents and through many other factors gathered together, we were born. So because we were born, we will certainly die because it is a compounded phenomena. And so like that, all the, for that reason, all the sufferings that we go through, everything that, you know, we are enduring, all the sufferings, they were not there from the very beginning. So they came from some sources, some, some causes and conditions. And because they were put together or compounded through this process of gathering all the causes and conditions together, therefore, all the problems, the, all the suffering that we go through will also decrease or let's say degenerate. So all in all, everything that, everything that we encounter in our life is actually made out of compounded phenomena. Everything that we encounter in our life actually comes from causes and conditions. And so therefore, all these are impermanent. Nothing lasts forever, nothing is eternal. Whether it's, whether, whether it's our life, whether it's our relationships, whether it's people we love, whether it's people we do not love, whether it's a stranger, anything, right? Nothing change, nothing remains unchanged, everything changes. And that is known as the first of the four seals, that all compounded phenomena. As long as something is put together, that thing can be brought apart as well. That is the first seal of the Buddha. So the first of these four seals is the all compounded phenomena are impermanent. Now the second seal of the Buddha, or the second seal of Buddha Dharma is known, is known, is known as all contaminated things or all contaminated phenomena are suffering, are suffering in nature. All contaminated phenomena are suffering in nature. What that means, what that means is contamination, right? So if, if something is contaminated, then it is suffering or misery or painful in nature. But we are talking about contamination here, something, some sort of contamination, some sort of poisoning, some sort of stain. So what that stain or contamination basically is, so there are many, but we will, if, if you go to the root of that, is actually selfishness, selfishness. If any of our actions, if any of our encounters, if any of our experiences were made, composed, made possible through selfish attitude. If selfishness is at the root of our experiences, our encounters, our engagements, our relationships, the things that we experience and whatever, whatever, whatever. If selfishness is at the root of everything, anything, that is nothing, that will bring nothing but misery or suffering. So Buddha taught the second noble, the second seal of the Buddha is known as all contaminated phenomena are suffering in nature. So the second teaching of the Buddha, second seal of the Buddha, second seal of the Buddha Dharma is known as all contaminated phenomena are suffering in nature. Now the third one, the third seal of the Buddha Dharma is known as all phenomena are empty and selfless. So what that basically means, so here we hear, you know, all phenomena are empty and selfless, right? And we talked about selfishness earlier. So if all phenomena are selfless, then how does the topic of selfishness comes, right? Even though we use the same term selfishness and selflessness and self and selflessness, though the first thing, contamination, when we say selfishness, that self and when we say selflessness, these two self are different selves. So when we say selfishness, we are talking about selfishness as in a, as, as a, as a human being or as an sentient being, we usually have that kind of the, the attitude of myself being superior, more important and others being less important. So one might, you might disagree with me on that because you might say, okay, I love my children more than myself. But you love your children more than yourself in the, because they are your children, right? So because they are connected to you, because they are, you can pretty much say an extended version of yourself. Because they come from you, so they are an extended version of you. And so therefore, you, you know, a mother can actually give their life for their children, can do so much, sacrifice so much, and that's, that's a reality. But at the same time, it actually, usually what we call mother's love for child, even though from a worldly point of view, that is a pure love, from a spiritual point of view, that love is also contaminated. And therefore, a lot of parents suffer from their love to their children as well. And vice versa, the children also suffer from their love towards their parent. Because our love to our spouses or our parents or our children are also contaminated in the selfish, selfish attitude. So because we love our children or our parent or our spouses because they are endearing to us, right? I love my husband or my wife or my parents because they are my parents, my relatives, my this and my that. So if you cut that my thing out, if you, if you cut that thing out, if you, if you take away that tagline of my, then would you, if you, if you do not relate to that person as a my, if you do not, let's say, when you say my, you're actually possessing that person, right? That is my husband, that is my children. So it becomes like it's my mobile phone, it's my car, it's my husband. So you are actually possessing that person. So when you take away that position, when you take that position, that possessing aspect away from the love, from that, from, from that equation, then it's very difficult to love a person, it's very difficult to love anyone. So that actually tells us that our love, the love that we share, we have for everyone around us, is actually also, I'm not saying that's bad or anything, you know, don't get me wrong. But what I'm saying is from a spiritual point of view, that is rooted in selfishness and that is why we are still stuck in samsara. There's a, there's a famous, it's very popular comic strip where someone goes to Buddha and asks, I want happiness, right? And then the Buddha replies by saying, you know, first of all, take away that I, that's ego, right? That's your pride. And secondly, take away that want, want, I want happiness, right? Want, that is desire, that is attachment. So now what, what remains? When you take away I, which is ego, when you take away want, which is attachment, then what remains is happiness, so you have happiness when you, yeah, yeah. So anyway, that's, it's from a comic strip. So most of, most of the actions that we engage in, in, in our conventional life is rooted in selfishness. But when I say in the, in the third seal of the Buddha Dharma, which all phenomena are selfless and all phenomena are empty, we are not talking about that, that, that free from that selfishness, we are talking about something else. So that self, that selflessness we are talking about, that all phenomena are selfless, has no self, the all phenomena, no phenomena has a, all phenomena are empty and all phenomena are selfless. So these things, this, to explain this thing takes a little, quite a bit of time. But I will try to be as simple as I can. So the first thing is that all phenomena are empty or has an empty nature. That means all phenomena, everything, all phenomena means everything. So everything is free from having an inherent existence. That is, nothing has a substantial truth to it. So the fact that nothing has, no phenomena has a substantial truth, nothing has substantially real, nothing is ultimately true. So we will not talk about everything, you know, even though Buddha said all phenomena, everything is substantially, you know, free from having an inherent existence, we will not talk about, talk about everything. We will start with one thing, one thing. That is me, myself, I, myself, right? Or you can tell, you know, yourself. So start with me, start with me. And so when we, because everything, we, when we think about something, when we plan something, when we talk to someone, when we engage in an action, whatever, whatever we do, we do from my perspective, right? From my point of view, everything we say, we think, we talk, we are doing it from my point of view, my perspective. And we usually take that for granted and that for, you know, the ultimate reality or that truth. And therefore, most of the problem that we have in the world is because my truth is the actual real truth and your truth is less real than my truth. And whether it's, you know, all the disagreements, all the disagreements or all the issues that we have in the world is because, you know, my truth and your truth, right? So let's begin with me, myself. So if you look at, if you look at it unobserving, unobservingly, if you don't observe carefully, there is a me, right? I'm talking, I'm listening, I'm going, I'm walking and all that. But if you go deeper and try to find out where that me actually is, so even though from my point of view as a speaker, there is a me, there's a speaker. But beside the label given to me as a speaker, beside the name, let's say Tongorumuche, or beside the, the label that was given to me as a me, as an individual, a person. So where is that person? Is it in any part of my physical body, from the tip of my head to, you know, bottom of my toes? Is it any, anywhere? Can you find yourself within your body? Can you pinpoint, oh, this is me, can you show something like that? So if you don't, okay, then you might say, okay, me, I am not the body, but I'm actually the mind. So which mind is you? The mind that is thinking about you, is that you? Your emotions are you? Or, or the, the, the ideas that you have about world, your plans, your attachment, you know, your argument with people, whatever is going on in your thought, is that you? Because this can't be you. Because you are the person who possess or who creates or who generates all those, all these different thoughts. But therefore, you are the observer of those thoughts, therefore, these thoughts cannot be you because these thoughts are the observed or the subject. So therefore, if you look carefully, if you observe carefully, you will never find you within yourself, no matter how you. And if you can't find you within yourself, of course, there's no question you can find yourself outside of yourself. But therefore, you are not there. So that you being not there is known as selfless. So this thing, if you are not there, if I am just a label that was given to me, then the same thing applies for this laptop, this flower, everything is a label. This, this thing is a, a label was given to this thing called flower. But if you pinpoint at any part of the flower, this is a petal, this is a bud and that goes, this is the color and this is the outer contour of the flower and so on and so forth. And you cannot find a car, you cannot find flower, nothing is there. So nothing is substantially true. But conventionally, all things are there, you know, a flower is on this table, you, you guys are listening to my teaching and I'm speaking, conventionally, all things are true, but ultimately, nothing is real. So this union of nothing being there and nothing being ultimately or really, you know, substantially there, but at the same time, conventionally existing and real. So this is the, the known as the ultimate truth, that, the truth that one should realize, recognize. And so this is what the, the third seal of the Buddha Dharma is, that nothing is, everything is empty and everything is selfless, that is the meaning. Everything is empty because nothing has inherent reality. And, and because nothing has an inherent reality, whatever reality anything is projecting is not from its own, so therefore, they are selfless. So this is the meaning of selflessness, that all phenomena are empty and selfless. I know it's a bit too technical, right? So I think that last one, that the third one may be quite confusing, but don't worry about it. Don't, don't be dissuaded by the confusion. It's very difficult to comprehend. Don't worry, I studied that for 24 years and I still don't understand it. Yeah, so, so don't, don't be dissuaded, but this is one of the most important, you know, teachings of the Buddha, what that we should, you know, strive to understand, comprehend. So the third one is very difficult to understand, but once you understand, it's very easy to apply in your, in your life and it's very helpful. The first and the second one, especially the first one, that all phenomena, all compounded phenomena, all compounded things are impermanent, very easy to understand. If things come, things will go, everyone understands that. But to apply that in our day to day life, that's very, very difficult, right? So this is something, you know, so some things are very easy to understand, but very difficult to apply. Some things are very difficult to understand, but you understand it, you just click it and then, you know, everything, all the views changes. So even one of the great masters, summoned by the name of Aryadeva, he said, once you understand the empty nature, the emptiness, uh Aryadeva, he said, once you understand the empty nature, the emptiness, the reality, the truth of one phenomena, then you understand the phenomenon, the reality of all phenomena. So once you click one key, one lock, uh, once you click one key, then all the locks uh will be opened. But i- in order to get that master key, it takes some time, so don't be dissuaded, uh, yeah. So now the the fourth one is uh fairly uh again, easy to understand. The fourth one is that the nirvana uh is uh peaceful, on the nirvana is the ultimate peace. So this actually comes from the pre-Buddhist notions that, you know, before Buddha Dharma came into, you know, Buddha Buddhist concept, Buddha Buddhism was conceptualized, let's say. Uh, you know, there are many other uh um uh philosophical thoughts, beliefs in India, which, you know, once you attain this and this and that level of uh, you know, meditative realizations, then you are free from your suffering and this and that. So what Buddha is concluding here is that even though you can be, you can you can you can be free from uh, you know, uh, coarse level of suffering, grosser level of suffering, uh uh more the more subtle level of suffering will always remain there. And once you die, even if you reach a high level of realization in your this life, in this lifetime, if you don't attain nirvana, then you may be born in the lower realms or in some uh lower, uh, some very uh unsuitable conditions, and you will still go into suffering even after enjoying such a, you know, peaceful moment. So the only peaceful moment that you can have, the eternally, even though it's not a not the right word, the eternally peaceful, the ultimate peaceful, the ultimate peace is none other than nirvana. So basically, nirvana basically means once you uproot your negative emotions, afflictive emotions. So afflictive emotion means any uh, any mental attitude, any mental factor, any set, any sets of thought that actually uh disturbs you, any sets of thought that unsettles you, that is an afflictive emotions. And however uh conspicuous or inconspicuous they may be, uh, all these thoughts, all these mental factors are considered uh um meant afflictive emotions. So un- until you root out, uh, completely destroy, completely remove the afflictive emotions, uh, then you will always be stuck in samsara. And once you are there, you know, you will go up to the god level, and then you will go down to the uh hell realm and up and down, up and down, and this roller coaster will never end. But therefore, the ultimate peace is none other than nirvana. That is the fourth seal of the Buddha Dharma. So that actually uh concludes the four seals. And as as I said in the beginning, if you have the four seals, uh, if you adopt the four seals as your mental at as your attitude, as your daily attitude, or as your uh, as your mental attitude, or if you have the four seals, then you are a certified Buddhist. You know, yeah, if you if you don't have that, then no matter how much you preach, how much you practice, whatever you do, uh, to to put it bluntly, uh, whatever else you do, you're not a Buddhist, you know? That's 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 not from this teacher or this guru or that master, this master, Buddha himself said very clearly. So the four no four seals, the four seals you have, you are a Buddhist. If you don't have that, you're not a Buddhist. So those of us who have, uh, you know, keen interest, you know, uh, and has a affectionate attitude towards Buddha Dharma, wants to follow the Dharma, we should try, learn and try to adopt those four seals in our day to day life practices as much as we can, yeah? So uh, don't worry about completion, if you cannot do it, don't worry, we 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 walk uh slowly, gradually. Um, so that's 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 the most important thing, yeah. So that's the first portion of the teaching that you have requested. The second one is the four immeasurables, should I go over that or include here?
Continue.
Continue, okay, so I'll be very brief, right? So, you know, I think most people know about this anyways, uh, but I'm just gonna, you know, go through the and then, yeah, maybe you may have more questions, and I would like to engage in that. So the four immeasurables, so it's called, uh, so the literal translation of the uh is four immeasurables, because in Tibetan we call it the uh, so it can be, you know, uh, called the four limitless qualities. The immeasurable, teme in Tibetan means immeasurable, so we, direct translation is immeasurable, the four immeasurables. So so more uh more more conventional understanding would be uh the four limitless qualities. And that is very simple, uh, limitless joy, limitless compassion, uh, limitless joy, limitless compassion, limitless love, and limitless equanimity. So these are the four, basically, equanimity, uh, compassion, love and joy, so these four, so very easy to understand. Uh, so we usually this say this prayer in Tibetan, after we say the take of the refuge, uh, sanggechon, we we take refuge with the Buddha Dharma Sangha. After we say this, we say the second prayer as which is, may all sentient beings uh uh have, may all sentient beings possess uh happiness, be able to have happiness and its causes. And uh, may all sentient beings be separated from uh suffering and its causes. And may all sentient beings uh be uh never never be separated from the joyful state or joyful joyful state, which is free from uh suffering. And then may all sentient beings uh enjoy uh equanimity. So basically, uh, limitless joy, limitless compassion, immeasurable joy, immeasurable compassion, immeasurable love, immeasurable compassion, immeasurable joy, and then immeasurable uh equanimity. So this is what we practice uh all the time when we read, uh, when we do the, we do this as a follow up, follow up uh practice after the taking refuge. From uh usually since this is part of our ritual, ritualistic prayer, so in in the form of on form of a prayer, we say love, compassion, joy, and uh the equanimity, right? So may all sentient beings dwell in happiness and its causes, may all sentient beings be separate, uh freed from suffering and its its causes. May all sentient beings be able to enjoy the uh the supreme um uh joyfulness, supreme happiness or joyfulness, which is free from suffering, and may all be suffering, may all sentient beings be able to dwell in equanimity. So as a form of prayer, we say it in this order, love, compassion, uh joyfulness, and then uh uh equanimity. But in, as a, so this is a prayer, right, prayer, when we pray, we pray like this. But when you actually take these four into practice, we usually start from equanimity, then to joyfulness, then to um compassion, and then love. So I will tell you how to do the practice. So do equanimity, uh e- e- equanimity, uh joyfulness, compassion and love. So so the most important thing is equanimity. That is to see everyone as equal, so nowadays we talk about this, you know, equal, right, equal rights for human beings, equal rights for uh, you know, everyone. So so we know, we we know when the world is more educated. Uh, so this is not coming from uh from a religious background. People who are in the secular background now, we are all talking about bringing equanimity in the world, equality, we call it. So in these Dharmics, in the spiritual sense, we call it equa- equanimity. So basically, we want everyone to be treated equally equally, because everyone has one uh same or equal uh um same wish. That is, to put it simply, nobody wants unhappiness, nobody wants misery, nobody wants to be unhappy, nobody wants sorrowfulness. Everybody wants to be happy, everybody wants to joyfulness, everybody wants uh to dwell in peace. So basically, nobody wants bad things to ha- happen, everybody wants good things to happen. So whether it's your enemy, your worst enemy, people who is trying to kill you, even that person wants something good, right? People who is harming you, trying to get, trying to cheat you and, you know, abuse you, whoever that person, even that person wants something good for themselves, something good, and for what that's why they are doing whatever they are doing. And from my own side, from your own side, we all uh, you know, uh, want that. So we don't want anything bad, we want only good. So me and others are same in this manner, we all want happiness. None of us want unhappiness, very simple. So in this uh common ground, right, in this common ground, we can all dwell together peacefully. So so it's very important to develop that attitude first, the attitude of equanimity, that everyone, despite your like or dislike, has the same desire as you do, to be happy, to live peacefully, and not to be disturbed, uh, not to be sad, not to be sorrowful, not to be uh unhappy. So that is the most important thing. So once you have, uh, yeah, so that is the practice of equanimity. So as a, if you if you are a serious Buddhist practitioner, and if you want real peace of mind, then you should develop equanimity as part of your practice. So if you uh care and love and, you know, uh, worry about or, you know, take care of only the people that you love or that you're close with, then it becomes limited, not limitless. It is measurable, it's not immeasurable. So when you are able to see the sameness between yourself and others, which are uh innumerable, then your equanimity becomes limitless, and so therefore immeasurable. So this is called, because of that reason, it's called immeasurable equanimity, right? And uh, so once you are able to see yourself and others in the same position, you know, we are all in the same uh same position, then you know, whatever uh others are doing to you, even though, of course, as 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 ordinary human beings, we will still be disturbed. But if you know that the other person is also striving to do the same thing that you are trying to do, then you will start to feel some sort of empathy empathy for that person as well. And slowly, you will try to look at the thing from that person's point of view as well. And so when that thing comes, there would be a slight slimmer of joyfulness when you are engaging in whether pleasant or unpleasant uh encounter with other people. And gradually, you will be able to uh, you know, build that up, and that is called uh immeasurable joy or immeasurable in uh limitless joy. Because now you are, you find joyfulness in engaging, working for others, working with others, or engaging in uh, you know, interaction with others. So then that's that's joyfulness. And as you, and and as you start working with others, you started to see more from their point of view, their perspective. And then you will be able to see that, sometimes you will be able to see that people, other people are suffering more than you do, and then you start to feel, initially you will start feeling pity towards them, and gradually you will start to feel compassion towards them. Compassion actually compels you to do something about, you feel uneasiness when something has happened to someone. So that is compassion, you are compelled to do something about it. And when you are able to, that that is uh compassion. But when you when you have compassion for people you are close with, that is a limited compassion. But when you are able to broaden that to all sentient beings, then it becomes limitless. And the same goes when other people are enjoying having a pleasant life and people are, you know, people you dislike even, right? People you don't like, but if you are, when you are able to see, when you are able to find balance, when you are able to remain calm, even when the people you do not like are enjoying their life, then you have, you know, reached the point of immeasurable love or limitless love. Your love has now become limitless, your love is no longer bounded by the people whom you are close with and, you know, not able to reach out to people whom you are not close with. That actually combine, uh, you know, concludes the four uh four for immeasurables, yeah? Okay, so if you have questions, I can take three questions, and then we will conclude. Yes, please go on. Yes. 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 Oh, yes. Right. Oh, yes, 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 yeah. So that's one, okay, so the question was uh uh from uh from the lady was that when we pray, we do from top down, uh compact, love, compassion, joy and equanimity. But when we uh put into actual practice, it's the other way around, so why is it so? Um, so that's the question. So the answer is this, so, you know, so that's one of the main reason I start in the very beginning. Prayer alone does not help, so you have to put into action too, right? Uh, so when we pray, we pray that may everyone be be able to enjoy uh love, maybe everyone be able to have, in order to have the little bit difference is that the equanimity part is a little bit different when you are praying and when you are actually putting into practice. Uh, and actually from all perspective, from all the other things as well. So when we pray, uh, we are saying that everyone be able to enjoy uh love. And uh, so everyone to be able to enjoy love, everyone also needs to uh have compassion, everybody has to. If you if you don't have compassion, you cannot love everyone. In order to have, in order to generate love, you need to generate compassion. In order to generate compassion, you need to see, you need to have some sort of excitement, some sort of joyfulness in uh in 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 developing or in generating compassionate attitude towards somebody. So in order to do that, you need to see something common, some equality, equanimity between you and the person you love. So as I said in the beginning, we love our children because there is a common ground, we are blood related. We love our spouses because we have the same, usually, you know, same kind of goal, goal, you know, same goal or, you know, uh, I don't know. So anyway, because uh we we live together as spouses because we have a common commonality between us. Uh, and we and children, even though we may disagree with each other, we have a, always there is a common ground, because of which that equal that that equalizer, let's put it that way, that equanimity or that equalizer actually acts in making us feel, uh, generate joyfulness to do something for them, to feel compassionate towards them. And when feel, when we feel compassionate towards them, we try to bring happiness, love, uh, bringing love and uh, you know, good things, pleasant things for them, and through which we uh improve our love. So when we are wishing, we are wishing, may this thing come. So in order for this thing to happen, you need that thing, in order to happen, for that thing to happen, you need the next one, so on and so forth. But when we are practicing, we have to start from the beginning, right? It's always, it's, okay, let's put it this way. Uh, prayer is like wishing for a mango fruit, but in order to have a mango fruit, you need to have a mango uh branch. The branch has to have a trunk, the trunk has to have a, uh, you know, sapling, the sapling has to come from a seed, and so on and so forth. So when you are, when we actually put into action, you start with a seed, right? And the fruit comes le- uh at the last. But when we pray, we always pray not for the seed, but for the fruit, but that's the difference, yeah, so now you get it. Ah, yeah, sure, after this, after this. The second question from the gentleman is that uh, can you reiterate the third seal of the Buddha, Buddha? And why is it so difficult uh to understand? So the third seal of the Buddha, or the Buddhism, is known as all phenomena, all phenomena are inter uh emptiness, and therefore, all phenomena are selfless. So the reason all phenomena are uh empty, so why we say that, is because all phenomena are interdependent. So nothing exists independently, nothing exists substantially. So uh everything that we encounter, everything that we engage with, everything that, you know, that there is in the world, actually, it's dependent upon one thing or another, uh, different cause, different conditions, or different labeling. So without depending upon something else, nothing exists on its own, by its own uh nature or by its own self. So therefore, all things are selfless and all things are free uh from an independent existing. So therefore, they are empty. They are empty of an independent existing. So that is the, uh, you know, fourth, the third uh, the seal of the Da- uh Buddha. Now, why this is so difficult to uh understand is because you can say, uh, if you, uh, you know, a lot of people here, uh, you know, who are very well educated and very well, you know, you are smart, so you can understand this intellectually. But the problem is how to, uh, to understand that intuitively. So this is the most difficult part. So intellectually, when I tell you that everything is interdependent because things are dependent on this and that, everyone can understand it. Even I can understand that. So, uh, but intuitively, we believe we tend to grasp, hold, that things have a nature or having a, a, existence of its own. So for example, when we are in this house, we think as the house is holding there by itself. But the, but, but the reality is there are so many things that actually made this house to uh, to, 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 to hold up. And eventually, as the, all the factors that is holding this hu- uh house up, uh, denigrates, this house will fall apart eventually. So, so basically, and this happens with uh, uh, our day-to-day life when we have a person who we dislike, person who very much attach to or like, uh, we tend to believe that person to be the, for example, if you are uh attached by, attracted to someone, we tend to think of that person as the epitome, epitome of beauty, of epitome of goodness. And we tend to give everything to, uh, you know, tack ourselves toward that person or that object which we want to, we want to possess, right? So because there is so much uh realism that we give into or that we project into the object that is out there. Uh, um, uh, on the, uh, you know, uh, even though, even though it is all our projection, as, as we say, you know, uh, beauty lies in the eyes of the beholder. So it's our projection, not the reality. If it's really out there, then everyone should love that thing, everyone should love that food, everyone should have that person, everybody should hate that food. But it's not so. Some people do, some people do not. So that means the truth does not exist independently out there, but it is relatively true, relative in the sense that it is dependent on our projection for that thing to be true. But therefore, it is, so we are so much grasped, uh, you know, this is called ultimate grasping or ultimate truth grasping. So we, we are ingrained in this uh ultimate grasping attitude. So therefore, it is very difficult to intuitively understand emptiness, even though intellectually we can, you know, you know, converse, converse on that and uh kind of understand that. So that is why it's very difficult to understand it. I think that, that's it, right? Yeah. Okay. Last question then, yeah? Yes. Oh, yes, please go on. Uh, which, how to practice? The four seals? The third seal? Yeah, so, okay, okay. So, okay. So the gentleman uh from the audience, his question is, the third seal is very difficult, so difficult, but how do we get it, right? And uh, so, uh, so what I did was just an introduction, right? So you, you have an idea of like what, what is, where, where we are going. So you should try to read books on that and study further. So I know you cannot devote all of your time like, you know, uh, like a monastic, you know, you still have to work and you still have to tend to your family and all that. But, uh, you know, in whatever time you may have, study more. And nowadays, you can listen to, you know, different teachings uh on YouTube, or, you know, anywhere. So you can listen more, uh, study more and more and more, and you will find out the way, right? And then, then, then you, uh, uh, as I said, uh, you need to put into practice, uh, whatever I spoke, I have spoken right now, uh, and uh, whatever, whatever you have understood right now, you can put this thing into practice, you know, contemplate on that. So practice does not mean necessarily means you have to isolate yourself in a temple or some sort of, you know, uh, isolated place. You can, you can do your practice basically anywhere, except for shamatha practice, which is to, you know, gain concentration. Every other practice can be practiced anywhere with anybody, you know? Um, so therefore, you can do this, put this practice into, uh, you put these things into practice. So what I just told you, just contemplate on that tonight, think about what I said. Select one of the four topics that I spoke about and think about that. Does it make sense? Doesn't, doesn't, it doesn't make sense, it does make sense, up to you. If it doesn't make sense, you may want to find out more. You can find about books or other people or Google that and then you will find more and more and ask more teachers, that's the best. If you find uh some sense in what I spoke, uh, what I've spoken today, you can continue to practice on that further and further. And as your um, uh, as your fuel to uh further your practice on this particular topic based on my talk tonight, when that, when this thing extinguishes, when this things, uh, you know, the fuel is down, then you can read more books and ask more people, more teachers, and then basically you can teach yourself to do that. So that's how you look at things, but, okay, all right, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, so if you can change your, the way you look at things, if you can change your attitude, then that's basically the, the aim for our practices. So we are doing all the other practices, you know, praying, prostration, mandala offering, recitation, everything, so that we can change our attitude, mental attitude a little bit, right? So all these supplementary practices we do in order to uh transform our mind, transform our attitude. If we can do that, then our goal is reached. So, yeah, so we don't necessarily have to have other practice. Of course, unless we get to that part, we need to have all the other practices too. So before I conclude, I just want to say thank you to everyone, everybody. Thank you so much for coming. It's a, you, you all are very busy and yet, uh, you know, you uh took the time to attend to this Dhamma talk. Not because I'm, you know, anything, but because you want, you're really interested to learn the Buddha Dharma. That is what I really appreciate, you know? And uh despite all the, you know, uh, you are tired and I spoke for more than two hours and everything, but you still listen. Uh, so thank you for showing interest. I really appreciate that. Showing interest in learning the Dharma and you should keep this up. We rejoice that. And on that note, we will dedicate our uh, all the merits that we have accumulated, we will do the dedication.